Recording in progress.
Good evening, the hour is 6:30 PM.
Good evening, the hour is 6:30 PM. Having arrived, I'll call to order this regular meeting of the planning board. This meeting is being broadcast live on channel 1302. Anyone wishing to view a copy of the agenda and supporting materials will find it on the city website. To receive electronic copies of future agenda packets, please go to the homepage and subscribe to the city manager's, city meeting's email list. Will staff please conduct the roll?
Pamela Russell Slack.
Present.
David Orgaz.
Present.
Mayor Hansel.
Present.
Counselor Remy.
Present.
Harold Farrington. Roberta Mastro Giovanni.
Present.
Armando Rangel. Emily Levine Bernier. Gail Summers. Tammy Adams.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from March 8, 2022?
Madam Chair, I'd move that we approve the minutes for the March 28 meeting as presented.
Second.
Are there any other questions, comments, or any changes? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is S-05-22 subdivision - two lot subdivision - 63 Meadow Road. Applicant Russ Huntley on behalf of owners Travis and Whitney Farfard proposes to subdivide the 0.33 acre parcel at 63 Meadow Road. Tax map number 1090150000000 into a 0.168 acre lot in a 0.162 acre lot. The site is located in the high-density district. Does staff have recommendation for completeness?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Mary Brenner, Senior Planner. The applicant has requested exemptions from providing a separate existing and proposed conditions plan, a grading plan, a lighting plan, a landscaping plan, and technical reports. Staff have determined that the requested exemptions would have no bearing on the merits of the application and recommend that the board accept the application as complete.
Thank you. A motion to accept the application is complete.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Mayor Hansel. I'd move to find the application complete.
Second.
You're quick tonight, Counselor Remy. Thank you.
You can slow down.
All in favor? Thank you. Passes unanimously. So I invite the applicant to present on the proposal. Name and full address, please.
Good evening. I'm Russ Huntley. 659 West Road in Temple, New Hampshire. And I'm here representing Travis, who's also here. For the two lot subdivision, as you can see, it's fairly simple and straightforward. I guess I'd rather stand.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we've got a very simple subdivision. It meets all the zoning criteria. There's an existing house that will remain on one lot and vacant buildable lot is what we're proposing on the other. Both have about just a little over 59 and a half feet of furniture. 7,000 square feet, plus or minus. I don't really have much else to say on it.
Do board members have any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Anybody can ask.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mary Brenner, Senior Planner. And just a quick note, there are, if any of the board members would like to view a full-size copy of the plan, we have them up on the table over here. So I know there's a smaller version in your packet, but if you wanted to see the full size, it's available. As the applicant explained, this is a two-lot subdivision. The existing lot has one single-family home on the southern end of it. The site is located at 63 Meadow Road. It's 0.33 acres. And again, the proposal is just to subdivide it into two lots, creating a buildable lot for another residential property. This parcel is in the high-density district, and both of the lots would be conforming with this district's dimensional standards if subdivided as proposed. There is no development proposed at this time, so many of your development standards aren't really relevant for this particular application. But I'll run through some of the more common ones. For sewer and water, this site does have access to city sewer and water, so if new development were to occur, they would have the ability to connect in. This proposed subdivision is not expected to have a large impact on traffic generation to the site. I will note that at this time, there's no new driveway proposed. That would be at the time that the new parcel would get divided, or developed. And there are no wetland areas or surface waters on the parcel or within 30 feet of the parcel. And, oh, and then the parcel also lies completely outside of the floodplain. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and staff did provide some recommended language for the motion on page 16 of your packet.
Do board members have any questions for staff, Mary?
So at this time, I'll invite the public to ask questions or provide any comments. Okay, I do not see any comments. Do we have anyone on that can call in?
No, Madam Chair. We didn't advertise the Zoom link for this meeting, so there's no one on Zoom.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this time, I will close the public comment portion for the deliberation. Is there a motion for the, on this request?
Yeah, I mean, I'd just comment that it seems pretty straightforward and might allow for some more density in this area, so hopefully some housing at some point.
That's what I was thinking.
I would move to approve S-05-22 for a two-lot subdivision of the parcel located at 63 Meadow Road. Tax map parcel number 109015000. As shown on the plan, identified as two-lot subdivision land of Travis D. and Whitney P. Farford, located at tax map 109 lot 015. 63 Meadow Road, Cheshire County, New Hampshire. Prepared by Huntley Survey and Design, PLLC, at a scale of 1 inch equals 10 feet, dated March 2, 2022, and revised on April 1, 2022, with no conditions.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Remy. Any discussion or any edits? All in favor? Thank you. It's approved. You're welcome. The second item on the agenda is SPR-02-22 Site Plan - Aroma Joe's - Zero West Street. Applicant Brickstone Land Use Consultants on behalf of owner Judy L. Williams proposes to construct an 800-square-foot drive-thru-only Aroma Joe's coffee shop and install a second curb cut on the property located at Zero West Street. Tax map number 5770250000000. A waiver is requested from Section 20.6.2. C. .1. A of the Land Development Code regarding screening standards for roof-mounted equipment. The site is 0.22 acre in size and is located in the Commerce District. Does staff have a recommendation for completeness?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant requests exemptions from submitting a soils analysis and a historic evaluation. After reviewing each request, staff has determined that exempting the applicant from submitting this information would have no bearing on the merits of the application and recommends that the planning board grant these exemptions and accept the application as complete.
Thank you. Motion to accept the application is complete.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mayor Hansel, I would move to find the application complete.
Second.
Thank you. At this point, all in favor? Thank you. I invite the applicant to present on the proposal. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jim Fippard. I'm here tonight representing Aaron Wiswell, who is the applicant for the Aroma Joe's to be constructed here. And also, I'm representing the property owner Judy Williams, who owns the property, and it's under contract to sell to Aaron Wiswell. This is an existing non-conforming lot located on the south side of West Street. West Street is here at the top of the page. Pearl Street would be to the left off the page. Richardson Court is here on the right, and the Ash Willett River is here where I'm standing off the page. As I said, this is an existing non-conforming property. When the lot was created over 100 years ago, it was a legal lot size. And over the years, there have been many, many changes to our zoning ordinances, including changes in the Commerce District. This is zone Commerce. At the time it was created, it was prior to zoning, but in the initial zoning back in the 1920s, you only needed a 4,000-square-foot lot to be a legal lot size. And this property is about 9,738 square feet. So much larger than what was needed for a minimum lot size back in those days. Today, 15,000 square feet is the minimum lot size in the Commerce District. So we applied for a variance to the zoning board, and earlier this month, the zoning board approved that variance to allow this to be a building lot, even though it's less than 15,000 square feet in size. So that allows us to proceed, and that's why we're here tonight for site plan review. We're proposing to construct a new building. It's currently a vacant lot. Previously, and for many, many decades, there was a duplex located on this property. The duplex was here, and that building has been torn down and was removed back in, I think, February of 2019. So it's been vacant for a few years now. And if you went to the site visit, you can see it's getting overgrown. It's trash is starting to collect, and that's what happens on vacant lots, even in the middle of the city, right on West Street. So it's good that this is being redeveloped. This is such a small property and such a tight property, I was relieved when Aaron came to me and said he wanted to build a roughly 800-square-foot building. It's so small, by today's standards, it's tiny by commercial standards. Reminds me of some of the old photo mat developments that we did, where it was essentially a phone booth. You could drop off your film and get pictures back. But this is bigger than that. This would be an Aroma Joe's coffee shop. We're proposing to utilize the existing curb cut at this location on the west side of the lot. Make it a one-way enter only. So we're actually going to narrow the width of that curb cut down to 12 feet once you're on the lot, a little wider at where it meets the street. But this will be one-way enter, and you'll drive around the building. You place your order at the first order window, and then you pick up your order at the second window and exit the property, or you can circle back in if, for some reason, you want to park in the back to eat your breakfast or drink your coffee, whatever. But that's essentially how this will operate. So this very small building, actually, it fits perfectly on this lot. We meet all of the dimensional requirements for a commercial zone. We meet the eight-foot pavement setbacks from the side property lines and from the rear property line. We meet the lot coverage that's permitted in the Commerce District. It's the proper width for the minimum lot size. So we can meet all the other dimensional requirements. It's just smaller than the 15,000-square-foot required today. But for this particular use, it fits, and I think it works okay. We looked at the drainage in this area. We did a couple of test pits in this portion of the property, the existing property. You come up from West Street, and then it slopes down gently toward the rear of the property. And so we wanted to maintain that drainage pattern on the property, not direct runoff toward West Street. So we're calling for an infiltration system that'll be constructed in this rear portion of the property. That's where we did the test pits. It's good sandy soils, oakum soils, so it has high porosity, very low groundwater existing on the site, so it's a good site for infiltration. So that's what we're doing. We're putting in a drainage system under the parking lot. It's like a large leach field, similar to a leach field for a septic system. It has two catch basins to allow water to be captured and treated before it's then fed into the infiltration system and can seep into the ground. What this allows us to do is maintain the shape of the lot, so we don't have to fill this area to make a flat lot. We want it to drain down to this existing low area on the property. It prevents water from leaving the site and going onto any adjacent properties. We're surrounding the pavement with curbing. So this is slope granite curbing on all sides, so any runoff generated from the building or the pavement is captured and delivered to the rear infiltration area where it's treated in the catch basins that are here and then infiltrated into the ground. So we designed it for a 25-year design storm, which by today's standards, and as planning board members, you should be aware. When we talk about these design storms, they change over the years. We've all noticed that storm events get larger and larger as time has gone on. And when I started my career, a 25-year design storm was two inches of rain in 24 hours. Today, we use 4.92 inches of rain in 24 hours. So it's two and a half times larger event than it used to be. And so we designed this to completely capture and infiltrate the 25-year design storm. And we used a factor of safety of two, which means instead of the six inches per hour that this soil can infiltrate, we only use three inches per hour. So it's a very high factor of safety. It's probably the equivalent of a 50-year design in this location. So I'm very comfortable, very happy with that drainage design and how that worked out. So I wanted to explain that to you. I know there was a concern expressed by a butter. This a butter next door, Mr. Katie. And I did receive a copy of that email just before I got to the meeting tonight. So I think I can address all of his concerns. But that was the biggest one, drainage, and that was one of the ones I wanted to address first. Sedimentation and erosion control. Again, because of the shape of the lot, it's very easy for us to control with silt fabric around, silt fence around the perimeter of the property to keep it all on-site. We'll put a construction entrance in in this area with stone, this existing pavement today, to keep it clean for the vehicles coming into and out of the site during construction. We do have adequate room for snow storage. Because we can meet the pavement setbacks, they can plow snow to the sides, to these areas. Temporarily, they'll store snow plowed into the rear parking spaces, and then they'll come in and truck it out of the site so that they don't lose any parking. We do meet the minimum requirements for parking, four spaces per 1,000 square feet. We're under 1,000 square feet, but we still have four spaces. One is handicap accessible. There is a handicap accessible route that's identified on the grading plan to the rear area of the building. And this is an unusual building, because the only entry point in and out of the building is here at the rear. And that's because there's no public entry. There's no seating inside for the public. There's no public restrooms. The public wants to walk up to the building and place an order. This is a walk-up window location. Otherwise, in your car, you drive around, you order here, you pick up here, and you can leave the site. So we meet the handicap accessible route requirement. This crosswalk from the city sidewalk to this location also meets the requirement for handicap access. So if, for example, someone's in a wheelchair, and you do see them going down the sidewalks on West Street, they can wheel into this window and place an order, just like everybody else. Landscaping, the plan I've colored before you is a copy of our landscape plan. We're proposing to screen, there's residential properties here to the rear and to this side, and a little off the page, again, here off Pearl Street. So we're screening those with six-foot solid fencing on three sides of the property. And we're also sensitive to the lighting impacts for commercial use. So we're only using 12-foot light poles in the parking lot. And the ordinance allows, I believe, up to 30-foot light poles in commercial parking lots. But we only are using 12 purposely to restrict the impact of lighting, especially on the adjacent properties. With the six-foot fencing in these areas, it completely cuts off light at the property lines, so there's no light trespass onto these adjacent residential properties. So we have three overhead lights, one on this side, the east side, one on the west side, and one on the south side to light the parking areas and where parking can circulate, cars can circulate on the property. And then there are some wall packs that are located in two locations on the building to light up this area. And this is a walled enclosure, by the way. It's a brick veneer on a four-foot-high wall. They'll have trash containers inside that enclosure, so it's screened from the public and contained within that area. And to get back to landscaping, we're ending the fencing when we get past the residential uses, and then we're using arborvitae between this property and the commercial uses next door. So arborvitae would be on the west side, arborvitae on the east side. That'll provide- So, arborvitae would be on the west side, arborvitae on the east side, that'll provide adequate screening between those uses. Then we're doing additional shrubs and grasses, ornamental grasses for landscaping at the front of the property and in front of the building, this location, and along this side of the building. We are calling for a bike rack in this location near the walk-up entry, walk-up window. And there was a request from staff to make sure we had curbing around the landscape area at the front. There's an existing concrete retaining wall that's only about eighteen inches high along the sidewalk, on our side of the sidewalk at the front of the property. We'll be keeping that, and that, we'll be landscaping behind that, and then we're curving on-site on the newly paved areas. So, the landscaping is very well protected. Our new sign would also be located in that area. There were questions about circulation on the lot, and to be honest, circulation was one of the challenges we faced with such a small lot. Normally, when we lay out a building and do our parking and circulation areas, I have to check it with, we use fire trucks and we use rubbish trucks and we use tractor trailers, and we check the turning radiuses to see if it can support all of those vehicles circulating on the property. And this lot is just too small, it can't. So, they can't have a traditional rubbish truck drive in and go to a dumpster and then make the turns to drive out. They physically can't do it. They'd have to stop and back and forth in order to wiggle and find their way out. So, they're contracting with a private trash hauler who'll come in in his small pickup truck, and he'll come and pick up the trash from these areas and bring it from the site. That's how we're addressing that. For the fire department, with a site this tight, the last thing a fire truck will do in responding to a call to this property is drive up next to the building. They don't want the fire truck that close to the building. And I've constantly heard that concern from fire departments, not only in Keene and all the towns, saying they don't want to get within fifty feet of a building. And the higher the building, the further away they want to be with their equipment because they don't want to jeopardize or damage from a wall section collapsing or, or moving into their work area. So, they'll end up parking in the street. They'll block West Street, they do whatever they have to do in order to fight the fire and respond. So, I know they had a concern. I recognize that concern and feel that that's the only way they'll be able to get in to fight a fire here. They're not going to drive up next to the building on such a tight site. We did look at traffic, and in addition to this circulation, so this can accommodate passenger vehicles, pickup trucks, they can adequately come in, make the turns, go to the windows and leave, or make the turn to circulate back into the property. There was a question from city staff about, why do I need this, this internal turn lane back into the site? And we've, we've done this on other sites. Right down the street is Walpole Savings Bank, and I've seen it used every time I've been there. I've seen cars circulate, even though they went through the drive-through lane, for whatever reason, they turn around and come back into the lot. I didn't want to force cars out into West Street to make that maneuver, and that would have been the alternative. If I didn't give them this option, they'd come out, they have to cross two lanes of traffic, get into the third lane, then cross two lanes again to get back into the site. And I just felt that wasn't the best, that wasn't the safest solution. The safest solution would be to make this turn as long as I could accommodate it. And using our turning templates and the turning software, this is the width we needed for this turn lane to be able to make those turns and adequately accommodate those trips on site. But I felt that was the safest solution, rather than forcing them across the sidewalks, across three lanes of traffic in West Street. So, that's why we're proposing that that be there, and it should stay. I think we've adequately screened the parking areas using the six-foot fencing and the arborvitae. Our intent is to save the existing large trees that are on the south and east sides of the property. There's cherry trees and maple trees that are here. And I know the Abutter had a question about that. Our intent is to save all of them. If, if for some reason, a tree is diseased or damaged, we may have to remove it, but our intent is to save them. And we're not regrading anything in this area, so there should be no reason to be, to force them to be removed. Our intent is to save them. There is an area over here that's, looks like scrub shrub grown up. It's actually Japanese knotweed. And I recognized it right away when I went to the site, and I've already talked to one of the site contractors, and I, and I'm hoping he'll get the job to do the site work here because we have a way of dealing with Japanese knotweed that's very effective. He comes in with his excavator and removes all this. So, he'll take three feet of material out with all the Japanese knotweed, truck it away to his burn pit where he can deposit that material, and then it can't spread. And we'll replace all the soil in this location and loman seed it. So, other than going around, I've, I've worked on sites where we went around and we physically cut the Japanese knotweed off close to the ground and injected a treatment into each stem to kill it. And that's a very tedious, very time-consuming way to do it. I love the idea of the excavator and the dump truck and the way it all goes, and we don't have that problem in the future. So, I can assure the neighbor who expressed that concern that that's our approach, that's how we'll be dealing with it on the site. Lighting, again, I touched on it a little bit, we're only using twelve-foot light poles for those three fixtures, they're full cutoff fixtures. The light levels we're proposing, when it's dark, they, they come on by photocell, they'll all be turned off after nine o'clock. So, the three pole lights are shut off completely. The wall-mounted lights, there's two of them, stay on for security purposes, but those are much lower in height, so it shouldn't be a problem for the neighbors at all after nine o'clock at night. We're reducing the overall light levels. We're a little less than two-foot candles when all the lights are on, and with the reduced lighting and these fixtures on, it's like zero point four-foot candles left on the lot from the wall-mounted lights. So, we're well below the standard of fifty percent reduction in lighting. I don't want to miss any of the neighbors' concerns. I know knotweed, the trees, the lighting, and drainage, that was it, right? I think those are the concerns expressed by the neighbor. The site is on city sewer and city water in West Street. The services, we toyed with the idea of saving the services that service the duplex that were here, but they're installed in nineteen thirties. And I just felt they were too old, they're coming up on a hundred years old. So, we're going to bite the bullet, we'll excavate into West Street, disconnect them at the mains and run new services in. The site contractors hate it when I tell them they have to dig up West Street. But whatever it takes, that's what you have to do, and that's the right thing to do, I believe, in this case. It'll be reliable, long-term service for the next fifty years, and I won't have to worry about it. Traffic, this type of use, it's, I, I started looking at the I T E Trip Generation Manual and felt that the numbers in the manual are way too low. And, and I say that because I've worked on other drive-through uses, and if you can get data from existing operations, and we were able to do that because Aaron Wiswell owns other Aroma Joes that are up and operating, so we could go to his facilities and get actual counts, seven-day counts, day by day, hour by hour, of the trips that they experience. And you, if you looked at the drain, the traffic report that was submitted, you saw the difference, tremendous difference. His numbers are three, four times higher than the I T E Trip Generation Manual. So, the manual in this case wasn't, wasn't very good, wasn't good to rely on. And I knew that, and thank God Aaron had these other stores that we could look at. The good news is that this type of use relies on pass-by traffic. So, it's not new trips where you're leaving your house just to go to Aroma Joe's, although some people might do that. Mostly, they're already on West Street, they're going to the bank, they're going to work, they're going home, and they want a cup of coffee and they pull into Aroma Joe's. Ninety percent of the trips that are estimated to go here are pass-by trips, so it's not new traffic on West Street. The new traffic that they estimated, and we hired a traffic engineer from Van Ness Hang in Brussels, very experienced, done a lot of these, and they said yes, the ninety percent is right. So, the numbers, if you looked at them, are very low. It's like eight vehicle trips in the morning peak hour, two in the afternoon peak hour, and it's because it's all existing traffic that we're relying on, on West Street. These are the architects' building elevations. As you can see, if you looked at it, it's a very small building. Most of the building is only eighteen feet wide, which is why I applied for a waiver in order to comply with the development standard for locating the H V A C rooftop units. Because the building's only eighteen feet wide, we're putting it in the center of the building, but it'll only end up about eight feet from the edge of the building itself. It's supposed to be ten feet according to the development standard, so I'm asking for a waiver just because we don't have enough building with to comply literally with the code. The H V, this is the elevation facing West Street. As you can see, there's a two-story section at the front of the building that will adequately screen anything on the roof behind it. So, behind it is this lower section of roof. This is where the rooftop units will be located, there's two of them. One will be located very close to this and the other will be in this area. And so, we'll add screening along the east, south, and west elevation. So, the top of this wall will add lattice that'll be painted to match the colors on the building, and that'll provide the additional screening necessary from the adjacent properties. There was a question about deliveries since, and I told you, we can't get a standard tractor-trailer, so what he's done at his other Aroma Joe facilities is he works with Cisco. And I think you've all seen Cisco trucks making deliveries in the area in, in New England. They're the biggest source for the food industry, for restaurants, and that's their delivery source. So, Cisco has smaller vehicles that will deliver to urban settings. They also are willing to schedule their deliveries to specific time periods. So, he was given the option to look at Tuesdays, Wednesdays, or Thursdays. And Wednesday afternoon is his slowest period, based on all his other stores. He can say without a doubt, Wednesday at two o'clock, we have no traffic, we have no customers, it's, it's a dead period. So, that's his window to get his deliveries. So, a Cisco truck will pull up on West Street, will back into the exiting lane, and then they'll come out and they'll close, they'll, they'll put up a barrier. It's actually a long saw horse with a sign on it. And I think I submitted it to planning, I don't know if it's in your packet or not. And it, it'll say, close for delivery back in twenty minutes. And literally, it only takes them fifteen or twenty minutes to make their delivery. It's pretty much the same delivery every week, and so every Wednesday afternoon, you can see they'll close, they'll put up a barrier at the entry, and the truck will be here, and when the truck leaves, they'll come out and bring the barrier back, and they're open for business again. It's worked in other communities, it'll work here. I think it was pretty clever how they decided to handle it, and I think it will keep it safe for the general public and for the users on this property. Surface waters and wetlands, there are no wetlands on the site. This will have no impact on the Ash Willett River, which is located about three hundred feet to the east of this site. It's not in the floodplain. It's not a use that's going to generate a lot of noise. They don't use the squawk box that you find at a lot of fast-food places. They have an order board that you can look at, and then you pull up to the window and you talk to somebody face-to-face. So, they can hear you, you can hear them, there's, there's none of that yelling and, dysfunction, I guess, that occurs when the squawk box is hard to understand. The older I get, the harder a time I have. So, I was happy to hear that this is how this operated. Back to the building elevations. This is not your typical building that you see in Keene, New Hampshire, but it is clapboard siding. There is a brick veneer treatment that is occurring at the bottom of the building. These are the thin bricks that are glued onto the building, but it's a real brick surface. It also includes the area at the back for the trash storage area. The clapboards here are shingle roof, and I think the only extreme that's unusual in Keene might be the blue trim color. But, and I didn't like it at first, the first time I saw it, I said, oh, and I'm a blue, I like blue. But I guess I got used to it. And I've, while I was away for a week, I went to two different Aroma Joes in Hampton, New Hampshire and Portsmouth, New Hampshire, to see how they operate, how long we'll be on the site. We were literally, we were on the property more than two minutes. We drove up to the window, placed our order, we got hot chocolate, and it was quickly served, we paid, and we were out. And we drove out, one is on Route One, which is a very busy four-lane road south of Portsmouth, between Portsmouth and Hampton, and we made a left turn out of their driveway without much difficulty onto, onto Route One. And you know where I'm going with this. We also did that on Woodbury Street in Portsmouth, another busy four-lane roadway, had no problem making a left turn. And I think a left turn can be safely accommodated in this location. And the reason for that is we still have traffic lights east of the site at the Island Street intersection and west of the site at the shopping center driveways. And the traffic lights create gaps in the traffic. And if you, if you drive on Winchester Street much, which I do every day, as soon as the roundabouts went in, the gaps went away. Traffic flows freely through the roundabouts, and sometimes I have a hard time turning right out of my driveway at my office, just because there's no gaps any longer. That's the biggest difference I've noticed. But in this location, you still get the gaps because we have the lights, until those go away. And they may go away, I don't know what the state's ten-year plan is when they finally address West Street, but I have heard they're talking about a median. And when a median goes up, then it's right in, right out for everybody. And so, I'm comfortable with that. Aaron, the new owner, will be comfortable with that. I just don't see the need for restricting it to right turns only. I see people almost every day force their way to make a left turn out of Panera on West Street. And they've configured the driveway to force them right, they'll go around it and still go left to make that left turn out. So, I don't think we need to play that game here, I think it can be safely accommodated, and I hope you won't make that one of your conditions of approval. I'm happy to any other questions you may have.
Do any other members have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just a couple of questions. The, I guess it's the interior sidewalk that's closest to West Street, is that going to be striped or is it just a...
Yes, I just, it got covered up when we added the coloring. There is striping for that crosswalk.
Okay.
And I think you'll see it in the regular site plan set.
Okay. And then the only, the other question is, do you, do you have an idea of what the limit for vehicle size will be to be able to make the, the turn and do all that? I'm thinking if somebody...
It's going to be less than thirty feet. So, if somebody...
Okay.
If somebody pulls in with a...
With a trailer or something like that.
Or a flatbed, they may have a problem. They'll be able to do it, and we could do it. We could do it driving in and then backing up and driving forward and backing up and then driving out. So, if somebody's brave enough to drive in towing a trailer or a Winnebago or...
About thirty, thirty feet is pretty much the max.
Thirty feet was the limit, and then when we talked to Cisco...
Which would accommodate most, most things. I mean, I don't know what the...
Sure. The long pickup trucks, no problem. Passenger cars, no problem.
So, pretty much anyone driving something that's more than thirty feet long is going to have a C D L.
That's right. And they're going to be sensitive to where they go because they've probably run into trouble before, and they're, they're used to that.
Okay, thank you.
Do any other board members have any other questions?
So, only nine cars will be accommodated, regular length cars can fit there in total.
Yeah.
So, I know that Dunkin' Donuts has a side street, it does back up, but it also has like another street that people back up into that.
Right.
I just wonder if you have more than nine cars, what's that to do with the traffic?
Yeah, and I asked the traffic engineer to look at that, and he specifically addressed it in his report, which is part of... in his report, which is part of the application. They looked at what they call the ninety-fifth percentile, and it relates directly to how long it takes to process their order and get their payment. And again, relying on existing Aroma Joes, they've tweaked their menu, they restrict their menu to products that they can produce, get in the customer's hands. The goal is always a minute. And like I said, I was on the property two minutes. So at Dunkin' Donuts, I go to Dunkin' Donuts frequently. They're a good client of mine. Sorry, Christine, but hopefully this is going to help alleviate some of their stacking. I've been in line at the Dunkin' Donuts for 20 minutes sometimes. So depending on what's being ordered...
Well, Starbucks is...
Yeah, so...
Oh, busy place.
Yeah. I don't think you'll see that problem here just because they've refined their menu to keep it under that two-minute limit. But the ninety-fifth percentile is nine cars, and nine cars we easily can accommodate on the site. And it's in the site plan set. We added it.
That does not include the parking?
No. See, this is sheet C1 in your set. And these are nine cars in the queue, and there's probably room for 10 cars if they parked closer together. But hopefully, it'll never get to that range. So depending on the time that you're there, I guess. Most people, I know when I go to drive Dunkin' Donuts, I'm coming down West Street, and I can see the line backing up into Avon Street, I keep going. I'm not going to sit in that line and wait 20 minutes, so...
Even in Swansea, you say?
Yeah, all of them, Court Street. I've counted actually 18 cars on the line at Court Street.
That's why I asked, is nine and a...
Yeah. I mean, it's off the charts. They don't...
But Aroma Joes only does coffee, hot chocolate. Do they do tea?
They do tea. My wife had tea. They do sandwiches.
Okay.
Danish, some pastries, and yeah.
Okay. And Councilor Meave, raise your hand up as well for a question.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I... Is there a way to estimate the traffic that would be if this was allowed to be right and left turn? Is it 50% each way? Because if you're saying that there's an additional 40 cars coming across that road...
Actually, I talked to the traffic engineer about that. In the morning, the traffic is very heavily weighted into town. So people turn right in and right out because they're continuing downtown. In the afternoon, it's weighted in the other direction. So people are coming from the downtown area, turning left in and then turning left out to continue west out of town. So depends on the time of day and when you're looking at it.
Okay. Yeah, it's hard to judge because I can imagine that being incredibly unsafe to cross if it was peak time and adding that much traffic. As someone who...
It's...
I've driven that road almost every day, and it is...
I think we've all done it on West Street. If it's too hard, if the lines are too long, you don't see any gaps to turn left, you go right and you find a way to turn around. I mean, here, they can go right, they can turn down Richardson Court and come up Bridge Street and try to go left, or they can continue down West Street, take a left into the bank at the signal and turn around in the parking lot and come out. So we all learn different ways to do it. Same thing on Lower Winchester Street. You come out of the car wash, and there's a long line of cars coming from the roundabout. There's no more gaps. So you go right, and they turn left into Fairfield's and go through their parking lot. And Fairfield knows it. David Gale laughs about it, but that's what we do. We find a way until the state comes in and says, "We're going to fix it." Put up a center median, you're all going right, right in, right out.
One more on this. The only thing is, we have no control over their actual menus. So right now, their plan is that it's a minute or two, and everything moves quickly through here. But there's not much room for error on that. So if it slowed down to three minutes, we'd be in the street.
And I don't think they'll do that. I mean, there's over 400 Aroma Joe stores, so they've figured it out. That's their niche. It's quick in, quick out. A lot of people go there because of that, because they know they're going to have a longer wait at Panera or at Dunkin' Donuts, the other drive-through places. And they purposely keep their menu such that they can get them in and get it out. It's one of their secrets to their success.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. It might have been mentioned, I may have missed it, but when exiting the building, a car wanting to turn left, is there room for another one to go next to it and turn right? Is that why you know? Yeah?
This is seventeen and a half feet wide. So we didn't want to make a dedicated lane for right turn and for left turn. So I mean, it's going to be up to the drivers and how sensitive they are to it. I guess if I'm coming out and I know I'm going left, I will hug this left side so somebody can get by me to go right if I have to wait. But it's not purposely designed for two exit lanes.
Any other questions? Well, I just have a comment. I'm on that street quite a bit, and I go to Starbucks, and I do Dunkin' Donuts, and I go to Walpole Savings Bank. And every one of those businesses can turn right or left. And it's because of the lights, like you spoke about, that you have that opportunity because there's going to be a break. There is a plan by the city to do an upgrade to West Street at some point, and I think it's going to come sooner rather than later, but I don't think we all know what the plan is yet, although I do have an idea. So I'm inclined to not to allow that turn because I don't think there's going to be any other problems. Because honestly, if I have to wait too long at Starbucks, Dunkin' Donuts, I just don't get the coffee. Or I go back to the office, and then I go back. So I'm inclined to agree with what you're saying about Aroma Joes and how many cars will be lining in. So does anyone else have any other comments before I invite staff up? We'll have a public comment in a minute. So at this point, I see no other questions from the board, so I'll invite you, Evan, to come up with...
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Evan Clements, planner. For the benefit of the minute taker, I was also the one to speak on the completeness. Jim's presentation was very thorough. I'll try my best not to repeat too much of what he said. So the proposal is currently before us is to construct an approximately 42-foot by 18-foot, single-story building with various site improvements to accommodate a walk-up, drive-through coffee shop with no indoor or outdoor seating. Let's see. The property was recently the subject of a variance request to permit a building lot consisting of 9,738 square feet in the Commerce District, where 15,000 square feet is normally required. That variance was approved. Let's see. Mr. Fitbird very adequately described the drainage on the site with a proposed infiltration system and two catch basins, the 25-year storm event, assuming approximately 4.92 inches of rain in a 24-hour period. The grading and drainage plan shows silting control in the form of silt fence to be installed along the perimeter, the down-slope portion of the site. Matting is also proposed, as well as a temporary construction entrance. Snow storage and removal. There's plenty of storage around the perimeter of the parking area with an allotment for temporary storage before it is then collected and removed from the site. Landscaping includes 16 arborvitae's to be installed along the east and the west of the property, as well as a six-foot fence around the southern border, eastern and western next to the residential uses. There is also a selection of approximately 43 perennials, shrubs, and grasses to be installed as well. And then temporary construction fencing is to be installed around the existing trees currently on the property to protect their root structure during site development. We briefly discussed the waiver. As Mr. Fitbird said, the building is approximately 18 feet wide, and so the requirement for rooftop mechanicals to be set 10 feet from the edge of the building is very challenging to meet. So just to remind the board of your waiver requirement, the board should consider that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and the intent of the regulations. Specific circumstances relative to the site plan or conditions of the land and such indicate that the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulation. And in granting a waiver, the planning board may require any mitigation that you deem reasonable or necessary. The lighting plan, as Mr. Fitbird described, includes three 12-foot poles, as well as some wall-mounted packs around the structure of the building as well. One minor issue with the lighting plan is that full cut sheets for the fixtures were not provided, so temperature for those lighting fixtures was never evaluated. So a condition of approval may be to provide full cut sheets for those fixtures so that we can make sure that the... I believe the regulation is no greater than 32,000 Kelvin for the color temperature on that. So that's just something we need to verify. Sewer water, as Mr. Fitbird said, is the new one-inch water line, four-inch sewer line. I won't really go into traffic and access management. I'm pretty sure we covered that significantly. I would just say, the proposed delivery operation, while it does kind of make a real-world sense considering the constraints of the site, Section 20.9.2B does say of the Land of Element Code, does say wherever possible, the number of curb cuts or driveways on public streets shall be limited, and to ensure that safe navigation around the site and adjacent is Filling and excavation is pretty straightforward. Like Mr. Fitbird said, there really isn't a plan to do a significant amount of regrading effort. They do estimate approximately 200 cubic yards of material to be either removed or brought onto the site over the duration of site development. That assumes approximately 20 trips with a 10-yard truck and with an intent to haul material from New Hampshire Route 12 to West Street and then to the building site. And this does not trigger any additional review or requirements for filling and excavation. And according to the project narrative, the applicant states that no excessive noise will result from the proposal. As far as the applicant is concerned, there are no hazardous or toxic materials on the site, and then there are no wetlands on the property, and the site is sufficiently far away from the Ashlot River, and that standard appears to be met. At this time, I'm available to accept any questions or answer any questions the board has.
Do any board members have any questions for Evan? Councilor Meave?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two. The fact that the parking is listed as staff-only, does that meet the requirements? The handicap accessible parking is listed as only available for staff. I just don't know if there's any requirements with ADA that because there's a walk-up window or accessible window there, that there's some available parking on-site for handicap accessibility? Or if it is okay that it's only from the street that they could come onto the site for handicap accessibility?
If I may, Madam Chair. John Rogers, the community director.
Yes, thank you.
So the building code does have an allowance that is exactly as the counselor mentioned, is from the public way, the accessibility from the sidewalk to this site, since it strictly is a pickup window. There is an allowance within the code, the way that Jim has designed this, that the accessibility parking really is meant for the employees because it's really not... You're really not inviting vehicular traffic to come and park and get out and go into the building. So that... We did check the building code and the accessibility section of the code, and this design does meet that requirement.
Thank you. Second question. Thank you. The screening that was referred to for the other three sides of the building is not included in the plans, but it was discussed. Do we need to have that included, or is it okay that it's been discussed?
What screening are you referring to?
He mentioned lattice work around the top of the building. Yes, we'd potentially be providing an exception based on the fact that the building's only 18 feet wide, so 10 feet from the edge would be negative two feet of gap there. So I get that we can't... We couldn't possibly enforce it with the current building design, but there would still be mentioned lattice work around the outside matching the colors, but that's not included in the visuals that we have. I don't know if that's required for the plan.
Sorry, if I may. Mayor Brenner, senior planner, I think how we would handle that as staff is when there are details for the screening, we would have them saved with the project folder, and we would review them to make sure that they meet your standards for screening. If they didn't meet the standards for screening, we would tell the applicant at that time, they either need to meet the standards or come back to you for approval and getting a waiver from that standard.
So would that be a condition of approval for us, or is that...
You could choose to make it a condition of approval. That's up to you. I think either way, staff will be reviewing them when they're submitted. If you make it a condition of approval, I think the only change is that that would then mean that they have to submit the screening requirements within the 180 days that they have to get their plan signed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Hansel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A question for staff. So in regards to the lighting temperature range, should we make that a condition of approval, or is that treated in a similar way where...
I recommend it as part of the motion to make that a condition of approval.
Ah, I see. I got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions for Evan? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So at this time, I will invite the public... I'm sorry, Evan.
Just one more thing. I forgot. I apologize.
That's okay.
I did... I know we did briefly discuss the letter that was submitted by an abutter, and Jim did go through the concerns of that abutter, but I do just want to again mention to all of you that it is in front of you if you want to address it in any further manner.
Thank you. I did not have any other questions. I think Jim covered all four points here that were in the letter from the abutter. So I was satisfied with what he had to say. I think he answered them all. Did anyone else have any other questions about that? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Evan.
You're welcome.
So at this time, I do see that there is someone from the public that would like to speak. So I will open up the public comment period. So if you would like to make a comment or have some questions for the board, if you could just come forward and sit in the chair and give your name and address. Hi.
Hi. My name is Totasini Badis. I live on 21 Richardson Court. Only concern I have is there's a school bus stop right on the Pearl Street twice a day, Monday to Friday. That's my only concern. If we have another heavy traffic at the business, I'm concerned about my child's safety. That's the only question I have.
I'm sorry. So when does the bus come? Must come in the morning and the afternoon?
The bus coming in 7:20 in the morning on the right side of the property, on the Pearl Street. That's where the bus is going to stop. And then...
On the corner of Pearl and West Street?
Pearl Street and the West Street, yes.
Okay. So it's actually on Pearl Street or West Street?
On Pearl Street.
Okay. And that's where it stops in the afternoon and lets children off?
Yes.
Okay.
I walk from Richardson Court, pass the walkway on West Street, and then turn left like mostly every day in the morning.
Okay.
And in the afternoon.
Okay. Thank you. Jim, would you like to...
I mean, I grew up on Pearl Street. I took the bus, but it picked up right in front of my house, so that was convenient for us. But at the end of the street, I believe they pull off West Street onto Pearl Street, which is over here, and then students can discharge from the bus. So they would be walking down the sidewalk at this location. And as long as they're on the sidewalk, they should be okay. I don't...
Mayor Hansel.
Most drivers are aware of pedestrians on the sidewalk. I don't know if you're there to accompany your children or how old they are.
She's seven.
So.
Mayor Hansel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, the only, maybe a question for Jim and to address the concern, the plantings that are at the end of the site there, how tall are those going to, are those supposed to be? Because that's the only thing I could see that could cause a potential problem, is if someone's coming out of the drive-in and those plantings grow up to a certain height, you wouldn't be able to see maybe folks coming in from the downtown area.
Right. We purposely went with smaller-sized plantings because we don't want to obscure the sign. And the sign to the business is located here, and it has to be that far back from the front property line. So it slopes down to the sidewalk at this point, so these are, as I recall, junipers. There's a couple ornamental grasses that go on either side. They're further back from the sidewalk, so we don't obstruct line of sight. And I wasn't specifically thinking about schoolchildren, but I was looking at the line of sight for traffic for the approaching lanes on West Street.
And it's the same treatment for the sides around the perimeter of the site there?
Yeah, we have arborvitae's here, and then these are the low juniper plantings, again, at both curb cut locations.
So you think they'll be like 18 inches or less?
16 inches is the mature height for the juniper, and it's mostly a ground cover, and year-round ground cover, so then that shouldn't be a site obstruction at all in those locations.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilor Remmy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On that concern, I think I'm less concerned about the afternoon, but the overlap between your peak AM hours and the folks walking from Richardson to Pearl Street, the concern for me would be, again, folks trying to turn left into the lot and going pretty quickly trying to make a gap in traffic. It makes me more inclined to consider making it right turn only, even if it was for just the morning, to say that it would discourage people from turning left into the lot if they knew they could only turn right out of it. But that's, I don't know if it's a question necessarily, it's just a comment around that concern, is I could see somebody turning pretty quickly trying to make a gap coming left on West Street. Thank you for bringing the concern forward.
You're welcome. I prefer to walk.
Thank you. Well, I see that there are no other public comments, so I'm going to close the public portion of the deliberation. So I do believe we have a motion, but I do want to say that I still feel that, I don't feel that it has to be a right turn only. I mean, I've been on that street, and I travel that street constantly, so, and I'm also out there early in the morning. Just don't talk to me at that time. But I do hear your concern, but I do feel that, I don't feel, I can't count the number of businesses on that street that are allowed to do that turn. Dunkin' Donuts does, Walpole Savings Bank does, the cigar store does, and there's also a doctor's business right next door. So that's the only thing that I, that I just don't agree with that recommendation, but I don't know if anyone else on the board does, but I'd be happy to hear what you have to say.
Yes, I agree. Thank you, Madam Chair. I do agree that the several businesses do have that turn to the left available, so I concur. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a comment?
I think there is a original problem. Why it's only one lane going out there? All those other businesses have double, so right people who can go right, you know, while others have to wait.
Well, Dunkin' Donuts does not.
They don't?
No. I've been there, but they do not.
I've snuck.
Well, they've got the gas station there in the front that they're dealing with that traffic, but they normally, Dunkin' Donuts goes, there's one lane, really, you can't...
Walpole Savings Bank, I mean, constantly.
Yeah. Yeah. They do. Mayor Hansel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, for me, I think the question just becomes, is this site particularly different than the other ones on the street that are allowed to turn both ways? So I tend to agree with the chair. I do, and to the member of the public's concern, I feel like when we did the site walk, I was kind of looking at that, at how set back the building was going to be, and I think there will be a lot of visibility in front, and so that should give you some security. I don't see this as being any worse than any of the other driveways for the businesses that you have to walk past there, so those would be my thoughts on it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Councilor Remmy.
Yeah, I previously was completely fine with eliminating the restriction on right turn only, but that concern of where the bus stops are located raises a little twinge for me of what that looks like, especially in the morning. I'm not so concerned, I wouldn't put a restriction on all day, but even if it was just 7:00 to 9:00 AM restriction on right turn only, and I appreciate, a couple of the examples were given were coming off of a street, though. It was actually coming off of Richardson, I believe, not off of a driveway, the cigar store and the doctor's office, but that's just my, I have a strong hesitation to making it not restricted because of that.
Right. I hear what you're saying, but I would have a very difficult time doing this to just one business on that street.
CVS.
Yeah, and Panera, all the businesses are right turn only.
Not at that time in the morning. I'm talking about you doing that at one time in the morning. I'm not in favor of that.
Well, I mean, if it was all day, that's the other option, but it's...
Not in favor of that either.
But we do make that requirement of CVS and Panera to that point.
Mm-hmm. Panera won't be there long, so it'll just be CVS. But anyway, I think at this point, you know, we've deliberated, but I think I'm going to ask if someone has a motion.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I mean, I can make, I'll make the motion without number five there, and if someone wants to make an amendment to add it, then we can vote and see if there's the will of the board to add it in. So if we're ready for that, I have a motion.
I am.
So I would move to grant a waiver from Section 20.6.2.C.1.A of the Land Development Code and approve SPR-02-22 as shown on the plan identified as Aroma Joe's Zero West Street, Keene, New Hampshire, prepared by SVE Associates and Brickstone Land Use Consultants at a scale of 1 inch equals 10 feet dated March 18, 2022, and last revised April 5, 2022, and on the architectural elevations received on March 18, 2022, and prepared by Reprise Architecture, Inc. of Burnsville, Minnesota, at a scale of 1 quarter inch equals 1 foot, with the following conditions prior to signature by Planning Board Chair. Number one, owner's signature appears on plan. Number two, submittal of full cut sheets for the proposed lighting fixtures. Number three, submittal of security for landscaping, sedimentation, and erosion control and as-built plans in a form and amount acceptable to the city engineer. Number four, submittal of a revised building elevation sheet that includes the following information. A, name of the firm that created the elevations. B, all relevant dates, including all revision dates. C, all measurements should be from grade and not an elevation set at 100 feet.
Is there a second to the?
Oh, second, but I also want to make an amendment if that's all right.
Okay.
So I would move to amend to include another condition, submittal of a revised site plan that displays the exit from the site restricted to a right turn only from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM movement.
Okay, with that, with the motion on the amendment, what I'm going to do is ask you to vote on the amendment first.
I'll second the amendment to get it on the floor.
Okay, thank you. So with that, the motion has been made, it has been seconded, and now we're going to vote on adding that on to the original motion. And so those in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. The amendment fails. I'm sorry. And so now we'll vote on the motion, and those in favor of the motion? And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll go to staff now. Do you have any updates for the board?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Mary Brenner, Senior Planner. I only have one really brief update for you, just wanted to, I think I did mention this at a previous meeting, but I just wanted to mention that staff are still working on updating the rules of procedure for the planning board, which were last, written in 1990, is the last year that they were adopted, so there's a number of significant updates to those rules of procedure, and we intend to bring those to you at your next meeting. At this point in time, it's not clear yet whether or not we will have a reason to meet in May other than the rules of procedure, so if we have something coming before you other than the rules of procedure, we'll bring them to you in May. If not, it'll probably be at your next meeting in June.
But that's at the regular planning board meeting?
Yes, this is the regular planning board meeting.
Okay. Are there a lot of rules and procedures? Is that, will that take a lot of time? Should we do that, can that be done all in one night, or does that need to be split up?
That'll, so there are going to be, I have started going through the rules of procedure, and because they're dating from 1990, there are a number of significant changes. I think the main one, probably the most important one, is in order to comply with the state RSA, you have to handle, you have to articulate specifically how alternates will be able to vote and participate in your meetings, and the rules of procedure from 1990 don't address that issue. I think that was a new requirement, well, sometime within the last 32 years that that became a requirement, and so that's probably the most significant update, but there's a number of other updates as well.
Okay.
So I think it could take some time to go through the changes.
Okay, I only ask if the agenda gets really heavy for all of us, is that we try to split that up? Like, some nights, it's not, we're not as busy, and we may only have one, two quick items on the agenda, but if that runs into a long period of time, I think for all of us, I don't want to be here till 10:00, 10:30 at night, and I don't think you do either. So if we can split it up, if you need to, that's fine with me.
Okay. And that's all we had for staff updates.
Okay. Is there any new business for the, from board members that you would like to include in the meeting? Okay, with that in mind, the following upcoming dates of interest for all of us, Joint Committee of the Planning Board and PLD is May 9 at 6:30. The Planning Board Steering Committee is May 10 at 11:00 AM. Planning Board site visit is at 8:00 AM on May 18. That's to be confirmed, we may not need one. And the next planning board meeting is May 23 at 6:30. I will now adjourn the meeting at 8:42. Thank you.